So I called the city council meeting Monday, December 19th. Do five. The order. And with that.
And. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Plummer.
Here.
Mayor Proton Sagerstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I'm on Zoom, but I'm here.
But I'm here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Merrill.
Here.
Cool. All present at counter four. The city clerks report on agenda posting, please.
At 3:48 PM on the 15th day of September 2022, the agenda for today's City of Sonora council meeting was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing anybody else online. Normally, we're going to have a presentation from Courtney Farrell, project manager for North State Planning and Development. Would you just notify me or not or something when if and when she comes online and we will insert that into our program at a later time?
Yes, Mayor.
If that's okay with the rest of the council? Okay. So with that, moving on to public comment for non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to the city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. If participating via Zoom, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or dial star nine and then star six to unmute. Have we any Zoom comments for public comment?
No comments on Zoom.
Okay, well, closing the Zoom public comment, so bringing it to the council chambers. It's open for public comment, please. Mr. Zimmerley, a pleasure to see you.
Yep.
Is the mic on?
Okay. Oh, that's better. Okay. I'm Alan Zimmerley with the Historic Dome Preservation Group. I want to give you an update on progress and also an opportunity for the city, actually. The update is that the school board who owns the building, Sonora Union High School District, who owns the building, is having the building appraised. Once the building is appraised, the school district will then set a minimum bid for the building, for the surplus property, expected to be sometime in February. At that point, the it'll go out to the public, be available to the public to respond to that offer or to that, yeah, to that offer. So far, no one has shown any interest in the building, any desire to purchase the building. The school district goes has been going through the process required by state code for the disposition of surplus property. And at this point, it's getting very close to being open to the general public. If the minimum bid is if the school district does not receive a an offer for at the minimum bid, the school district then will hire a real estate agent and the property will be open still open through a real estate agent for purchase from whoever's interested. So that's that's not going to happen until February and probably March by the time give the school district about a month, and then it'll be open to the public again. The other item I wanted to speak about is a grant opportunity from the National Park Service. There is a specific grant. Unfortunately, it's due on February 7th, so there's some urgency to it. But the grant is for rural communities of under 50,000 people. It's for economic revitalization through historic preservation. And the nice thing about the grant is that it's a block grant, so that the city could be the primary grantee from between $200,000 to $750,000. And then the city determines who receives the grant money. If the city has a specific project in mind, one of the examples on the website was having the fronts of the buildings here renovated along Washington Street, for example, or if there was an old theater in town, to have the old theater renovated. The secondary grantees, the ones that the city determines are eligible and the ones that the city is interested in providing grant money to, could be an individual, it could be a group such as ours, but the but the city determines where the money goes. Of course, we would like to see some of it, but the city could use it for other historic preservation projects in the city specifically for economic revitalization. So this is an opportunity for the city to get involved in our project in a way that is very valuable and yet not very costly to the city. In fact, it could be a win-win in that I'm looking obviously for our group to receive some grant money, but the city there could be other projects in the city and grant money could go to those projects, historic preservation projects as well. So I'd like to talk with someone about that, someone in the city that would be interested in pursuing that and hopefully get the support of the council to pursue that grant. That's good. Thanks.
Mr. Zimmerley, unfortunately, because of what appeared to be an emergency, our city administrator had to leave the room. And if you have the time to stay long enough, maybe we could just.
Okay.
Reiterate a few of those points regarding the block grant afterwards.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Dunn, you're going to take the floor. Super.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Katie Dunn, President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here this evening to share with you the results from our window display contest, as well as the Christmas Tree Lane trees. So the holiday window display contest, the mayor's choice went to the Sonora Bridal Loft. The Sonora High School Leadership Class choice went to Nest and Nook. And then the voter's choice went to Mountain Roots Upscale Consignment. And I just have to say, the merchants really got into it this year. And I mean, it is just outstanding. And if you have a chance, walk downtown and check it out, pop in and compliment them on their windows because they really went above and beyond this year. And then the best holiday lights, this is a an award that we actually created last year with Christmas Tree Lane. And it was a way to encourage business owners and prop and and building owners to join in with the Sonora Chamber and light up downtown Sonora. So we wanted to incentivize incentivize them. And so we have the best holiday lights and it went to Amala Detox and Tea Lounge. And a big shout out also to Fit and Pretty Bras and Boutique. They did a really great job. If you go and look at their building and look up above their building, it's small but very nice. So look at that, too. And then the best holiday cheer, this is another award that we created last year because people were decorating more than just their windows. And we're like, okay, you know, we need to recognize this. So the best holiday cheer went to the Sonora Insurance Agency. And they won it last year as well, but they really stepped it up. And if you haven't seen it, it is a gingerbread house. It's really adorable. You need to check it out. So that is what happened downtown. And then with our Christmas Tree Lane, first place went to Adka Early Childhood. And that tree was so cute. It had a hard helmet, like hard hat on top. And, you know, it was just, it was really, really well done. Second place went to Watch. And third place went to Meals on Wheels. So first place got three is going to get $300 from the Sonora Chamber. Second place is $200. It goes to their nonprofit. And then Meals and Wheels would get $100. And then People's Choice went to the Somerville High School Foundation. So we'll be posting that. And then at our Holiday Mixer last Tuesday, we actually did a raffle and silent auction to raise money for Christmastown Sonora 2023. It costs about $25,000 for us to do it every single year. So we thought, why not start now, you know, while it's fresh in everybody's mind? And all of the downtown merchants were very, very generous in donating items for our raffle and silent auction. We even had a night stay at Rush Creek Lodge and one for Evergreen Lodge and up the hill package that was the McCaffrey House, two lift tickets to Dodge Ridge and $100 gift certificate to the Epperson House. And we raised close to $2,000. So it was really, really great. And then also, we gave the Sonora Chamber awarded the Sonora High School Leadership Class a check for $500. The Sonora High School Leader, the Sonora High School Associated Student Body Leadership is committed to making Sonora High School a place where students feel a sense of ownership, recognition, and personal education experience. It's a student-run program designed to involve all students in school functions through events and support. These are our future leaders of Tuolumne County, and the Sonora Chamber recognized all their efforts and presented this check for $500 as a way in investing in our future and giving back to our community. So I wanted to share that with you as well. And then lastly, I just want you I sent you guys an email. And it was from Shea Shea from the Bay. This is an influencer that Visit Tuolumne County hired to come up. I met with her and walked downtown Sonora with her on December 13th, and she did two amazing Instagram reels, which is in the email. And she also did this huge, like, article on why you need to visit Sonora this holiday season. And she went around to both. She went around and there was information about Columbia and also Jamestown, but primarily it was downtown Sonora. So I wanted to share that with you. It's in your email. That's all I have.
Thanks, Katie. Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn. And an additional note. So many of our merchants got their windows. Well, several of them got them done very early, and they regrettably had a slight advantage in the competitions, I'm afraid. But they were all incredibly well done. And it adds to the beauty and the charm enormously. It was also a very difficult choice for me, as Ms. Dunn knows from the length of time it took me to actually settle on a grand winner. Anyway, thank you very much. And thank you to the merchants who participate. So.
And thank you to the chamber for organizing an amazing seasonal event.
Yes, that too. But I've always been pretty forthcoming with my praise of the chamber. You give me a heads up that our guest is here for the presentation. Good. So let us return to the second item, the presentation by Courtney Farrell, a project manager for North State Planning and Development regarding the Central Sierra Economic Development District Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Process. And I don't see anything on my screen. Courtney, I think you have the floor.
Okay. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Apologies for my delay. I had the at 6:00 PM on my calendar, not 5:00. So I apologize for that. I will go ahead and share my screen. I hope that you all will be able to see that.
So we will work on the technology involved. I don't see it yet. Does anybody else? No. So just be patient with us.
No problem.
But at this juncture, I don't even see you. So that's sort of a handicap.
Well, what I did provide in the agenda packet, the information that I was going to cover, what I did on this presentation was condense it a little bit. So if you'd like, I could just kind of talk you through it and then answer any questions. I think most of it, we should just be able to have a conversation. But you let me know what you'd prefer.
Just a second, and we'll see.
Okay.
If we can't invite the entire public into the discussion with your your visuals as well.
Okay.
But our tech expert is coming up to help deal with this. And thank you very much for coming.
Oh, no. Thank you for having me. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. And I won't take up too much of your time tonight.
Nice. We're going to have a half hour meeting, and you're saying nice about her not taking up much time.
I completely understand.
Okay.
We can see.
Everything's up.
Fantastic.
You and all your glory and your your screen.
Okay, thank you. So again, my name's Courtney Farrell. I'm a project manager with the North State Planning and Development Collective. We are located, we are housed under California State University Chico. And we have been, we are a partner under the Central Sierra Economic Development District, along with Chabon Concepts, to put together the regional comprehensive economic development strategy for the next five years. And as you can see on the screen, these are the jurisdictions that are included. And City of Sonora is one of those key partners. So I'm just going to give you a quick overview. Like I said, attached in the agenda that I know Tracy had sent out, did include more comprehensive information, but I didn't want to take up too much time because you all can look at that. And then my contact information is at the end. Should there be additional questions afterward? Just real quick, what, there we go. So as probably most of you know, the SEDS process is it's under the Economic Development Administration, which is a part of the Department of Commerce. And this really is to create those regional economic development strategies that really help to engage the community, understand what the challenges and opportunities are, and then identify projects and potential initiatives that either may be funded under EDA. USDA is also a funding source that requires SEDS. And now we have some new initiatives which are about to come online, the Community Economic Resilience Fund, which you may have heard of, or SURF, and then the Regional Climate Collaboratives, which is an initiative that we're just awarded through Strategic Growth Council. So the purpose is, again, of these plans is to really create a like a roadmap and a guidance of where you all as community members, residents, business owners, leadership, where you really want to see your jurisdictions and communities go, particularly over the next five years. A lot of things that we're addressing is capacity and that regional collaboration, knowing that, you know, ourselves in the North State, we oversee 12 counties or work in 12 counties with some of the most rural, geographically isolated, we've been through, just as you all have with the fire seasons. And so we really understand that, you know, a need to work together and collaborate because of that capacity and able ability to leverage resources. So just real quick, an update. This is something I did update versus what was in your packet. We decided to, we're not extending the timeline, but we are at a place now where at the end, I'll show you what's been completed. But we've conducted and completed quite a bit of the background work. So that's data collection, compilation, the economic conditions. So really looking what the what it was, we're doing an assessment, looking at pre-COVID versus now. We've conducted the SWAT, which would then go out for input from the communities as well as councils and Board of Supervisors. And then, as you can kind of see where we are, visions and goals, we have a draft of that completed. So there's parts and pieces that are done. Where we really are now, moving into the January, February, March timeframe, is really that community and committee input. So one of the asks I'll have this evening is for you all to think about. Currently, the committee that's been very active on the SEDS process is the Economic Development District Board. And we're looking to expand that. And I have some more detail on that to come. Just to kind of give you again an overview, we did launch a survey back in August. We had 200-plus respondents. And we were kind of closer now to 250. You can sort of see the areas that have come to the forefront. Nothing really surprising, nothing. We're doing a comparison between the SEDS that was done five years ago to now, looking at that SWAT assessment. We're seeing a lot of this in a lot of our regions, you know, everything from really natural resource management, that land stewardship, land management piece, which is so critical in our resilience efforts, our fire mitigation, housing, of course, we're hearing across the entire state, if not the nation, focusing on our business community, that retention piece, and then looking at where we are now is to look at how are we going to achieve some of these goals and objectives that you all as a community and a region have and will continue to identify. Again, just again, some overview, you see Tuolumne County had a good response. I was looking through the survey responses before the meeting, too. Sonora is actually, there's a lot of comments on that. So good participation from your from your residents and community and business members. Again, just a quick overview of what the critical issues are. They're sort of, you know, bubbling to the surface. Again, nothing really shocking. We can see, you know, infrastructure, that's a chronic need throughout the state. Housing, again, as I mentioned. And then that really that resiliency component, we're really looking at how do we identify and dress and address things based on our experience of living through it, particularly over the last five years, what other communities are doing. I know some of you are aware of the Cow Ed, EDA-funded resilience playbook that was put out earlier this year. If you don't have access to that, I can be sure to have that sent to you. It's a really great overview on quite a few areas in terms of infrastructure, workforce, you know, down to natural resources. And so it's really been written, our agency wrote the workforce piece. It really was based on firsthand experience and knowledge as we're kind of navigating through these types of natural and economic disasters from the last few years. Another piece that I've heard too, from through these presentations is to, again, that that regional collaboration, what does that really mean? Looking at maybe, you know, cross jurisdictional as it's appropriate and can happen. You know, we've been starting to make recommendations where where we really see the need for that is maybe cross jurisdictional policy development, permitting processes, because we know when we get to development, which there is a lot coming in terms of broadband and even with the housing infrastructure, that that sometimes can be a barrier. So we're looking at that. The other piece that's been a key request that we're working on, too, is what was accomplished in the previous SEDS, you know, was it started? Is it finished? Has it not even been, you know, on at a topic of discussion? So we're going to be able to provide that as well to kind of see the parts that maybe need to be inter.
Courtney, if you can hear me, you have been cut off here briefly for the last 30 seconds or so. So we will ask you to stop.
And so all of this.
Can you hear me now, Courtney?
Oh, shoot. Can you hear me?
Yes, and we can. And you are back moving and live looking. So if you could go back about 60 seconds in your presentation, that would be just about perfect.
I had an internet disruption, I can tell. So sorry about that technology. One of the things we need to work on is broadband. So one of the, I think where I left off was possibly one of the things. So a couple of things that we've heard from these presentations. One being what was accomplished, not accomplished, maybe not even discussed in the last SEDS. So there was an activity list that to be implemented over the next five years. And so we're going to compare what that compared to what is being requested now from our from our jurisdictions. So we can kind of see what what needs to be carried forward, or maybe something just needs to be revitalized in terms of implementation action. The other things we've heard, too, is is really talking about that cross jurisdictional partnerships, where we're seeing a lot, and especially in our rural communities, is the need for collaboration across jurisdictions in terms of, especially in development. So if that's policy permitting, if there's a way that, you know, we can encourage or provide best practices in terms of, you know, how do we do that? How do we do it? So it's cost-effective, it's not resource-heavy and burdensome, but it's also helping to encourage broadband deployment, housing deployment, looking at our energy accessibility, things like that. So that all will also tie really closely into the resilience efforts as all of our communities navigate the the next few years. Here's some highlights of what we've pulled out of the survey, sort of things that we've seen consistently across most of the responses in the SEDS. When we when we get to the final document, which will be, we're shooting for June, we'll have a complete list of all of the comments. So all communities will be able to see what responses were. But as you can see, I mean, nothing, you know, historic sites, I did see that in terms of Tuolumne and Sonora. The vacation rental conversation, again, lack of housing, road improvements is consistent across the state. I mentioned infrastructure and broadband in particular. I know that there's a regional effort right now. And I know Kathy Galino has just secured some of the CASIP dollars for your region to assist with the planning. I know there's LADA funds that were applied for. So all of that will help really focus on your on your broadband infrastructure. The one piece I want to circle back with is that we are working in tandem with the Sierra Business Council, who is facilitating and will be your convener for the SURF process. And so SURF is built upon SEDS. And so the two documents and the and the strategies, they're not really documents, they're actual plans that are for implementation. We are working very closely together to make sure that they're being developed once SURF gets started in tandem and that they, again, they coordinate and complement each other. So finally, really where we are, all documentation, including sort of the background data, all of that, it will be open for review and comment. But where we are right now in moving into the January and the new year is that we want to expand our committee. And so we're looking for recommendations from you all. If you have, you know, these are some of the areas that we're looking at, education, mention that land stewardship and natural resources because we know how important it is for your region. We're really looking at recreation and tourism across the state. And you can see the other categories that we're looking for people that may be interested in participating in just a handful of meetings. And what we're asking is that they not only review the work that's been done, but really help us identify what the goals and objectives should be, how are we going to implement those things? Because it's, we're just providing the the guidance. You know, you really have to determine who on the ground is going to be able to put effort and resources and time toward it. And then if there are gaps in that, you know, how do we how do we address that, too? So part of the SEDS, too, will be identifying future funding sources outside of what's already being, you know, pursued. So that's it. I tried to keep it short and sweet, like I said, but I am open to questions. The next, I meant to look it up, but I can send that as well. The next planned meeting will be the Central Sierra Meeting, Economic Board Meeting in January. So I can send that ahead. I can send that to Tracy as well and Melissa. But we are looking to expand, again, that committee, and those would be separate meetings outside of that board meeting. That would be, we would, we would offer a hybrid option so that people can attend.
And what date were those meetings expected to be on?
We haven't set them yet because right now we're still taking input on who to expand the committee to, but it would be over the course of January, February.
Okay, thank you. And so from the council, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say, this is Councilmember Andy Merrill. I took your survey earlier this afternoon from the link you provided and left my contact information and thoughts on that. So thanks for putting that together.
Perfect. Yes, yes. And that's the thing, too, if you if you, it's still open because the process is still ongoing. So if you, any of you want to share that out, you have, you know, people that you want to make sure that you get their their input from, please have them send it because it'll come direct to us.
I had actually typed you quite an extensive response. I'd like to mail it.
Okay.
An address.
I, yes. Let's see, I guess I can't do chat. I can. So do you want me to tell you now?
Sure.
Okay, it's 35 Main Street. And it's Suite 132. And that's Chico. And it's 95928. And you can put it, attention, Courtney.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Proton, did you have any questions?
Well, I had some inside, inside track on this, being in the on the Central Sierra Economic Development Council last year. So so I feel. Uh, inside track on this, being in the, on the Central Sierra Economic Development Council last year, so, um, so I feel, um. I'm glad to see it moving along and I, I did give a nod to um Katie Dunn, because I sent the, the um. Survey to her to distribute to our merchants. And I think they were part of the uh. Explosion from Topeka County. So I'm glad that we were able to participate on the level that we did.
Well, thank you for your work on that. I did have another, I did have a question as well, and that is on the committee expansion question. How many people are you looking for uh from individual entities?
Um, you know, we haven't really set a number because it really, it's, it's to be an inclusive process. Um, so and because we're going to have a virtual component, um, what we're doing right now is sort of just. And then what we find too is often if you recommend someone, you know, sometimes based on scheduling, they can't make all the meetings. So. Um, I, we are going to structure it so that, um. You'll know, the, the community members will know what's on the agenda prior to, obviously. So they, you know, if it fits the, the schedule or not, but then. There's a opportunity for, for us to do one-on-ones. So I don't really want to exclude or limit um that right now. For example, from Calaveras County, I think we had ten. Recommendations, but each person was from a different sector. So some were arts, some were education. So I would look at it more of, you know, if you have an area that you really want to make sure is represented, or you have someone that you know, uh. Would appreciate being active in the process and could give some insight on Sonora and about Sonora, that would be really helpful. You know, it's kind of a roundabout answer.
Thank you. That, that was actually very helpful and. I think uh provides us a little bit of guidance on who we might be seeking out. And that would be, you would need those names or a context within the next month then?
Yeah, yeah. If we could have them by, and I can, I can follow up with some deadlines as well. Um, if I'm probably, if we could look for maybe like by January thirteenth, so we can get past the holidays and still have some time.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Well, council, I. So name is forthcoming and people and contacts would of course be. Helpful for the city.
Yes.
I, I do have a question now. So this, this ca, this committee is not the, um, the SURF. What would you call that, 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 that large um. Structure that has, what, twenty-one members or something? Uh, this is a, this is a different um committee?
It's different, but actually that's a good point. Um, Steve and I are going to talk this week, uh, because there potentially could be some overlap or a way that we could utilize that group. Without, you know, taking over, because obviously SURF is really important, but since they are meant to complement each other. I'm also speaking with him to see if there's any, any recommendations of those people that maybe either could participate in this other meeting, or do we. How do we integrate that in? I would like to have some separate meetings, though, specific to SEDs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think that wraps it up. Thank you very much, Ms. Farrell, for joining us and the update.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time, and I hope everyone has a, has a nice holiday and we will be in touch. And please feel free to reach out to me directly with any questions.
Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, Merry Christmas. Take care.
So. Due to the slight. Alteration, we'll go back and ask for approval of the agenda. So, well, I skipped over in part because I got lost. With the difference in the presentation, knowing it was going to be different time.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do we need to?
Is Matt still, is Matt still?
Clerk.
Yes, I said aye.
Okay.
Do we need to have a roll call because we have a member on Zoom?
No, you're good. You're okay.
Any opposition? I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Sorry, Doug, I just wanted to let you know you're okay. You don't have to take a roll call.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Hey, it's nice to have it from the expert. So, and any opposition? Any abstentions? No, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much. And with that, we will proceed to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public. Has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented and just wanted to say, I'm really glad to see we're extending our contract with Visit Topeka County. Because they've been doing some outstanding work. Um, I've seen their billboards all over the Central Valley and online and stuff, so. Um, I think that's money well spent.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? On the consent calendar? On Zoom, do we have any public comment? New, okay. With that, I will bring it back to the council. And ask for a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you? Query Matt, Councilman Hawkins?
Yes, I said, I said aye.
Ah, okay, couldn't hear you. Okay, any opposition? Any abstentions? Not hearing any, it passes unanimously. And with that. Ms. Kellogg. Do you have any further additions to your report? This has been an exciting time of the year for you, hasn't it? Good.
So it is a busy time of the year, lots of Christmas stuff going on, and now is the hopefully quiet time so we can get caught up on some things around here. That I love this time of the year. Um, and the main thing I wanted to do was to wish you guys a Merry Christmas. Because it's next week already and it will be here in a blink of an eye. And then I start my last twelve months with the city.
Don't say.
There you go. Then, and that will go fast, because I know how fast the last five years have gone. So, um, but anyway, and so that will be, I mean, we start. Figuring around, figuring out, strategizing and knocking some things off the list before I get out of here.
We're gleefully happy for you, but that's tempered by a certain.
I got a sign today that I'm putting in my office that says it's only work if it's something that you don't want to do. So there you go. So see, I started thinking that, what do I want to do when I retire, right? So there you go. But yeah, it's been a great ride and um I look forward to working with Melissa and getting some things on. Knocked down, knocked down and out of here and ready to go. So our projects can get going. The transit project should start in January. That'll be a biggie. We can get that one underway. And then we'll start racking up on the. Block grant funds that we have for Amy's projects and get those done and. Just start knocking some things off the list before I get out of here. There'll, there'll be more on that to-do list before I le, that left, because there, I'll never be able to finish everything on my to-do list.
It might be a little premature for accolades, but I want to thank you again for your tireless work on the Transit Center project.
No problem. I'll be, when that thing's done, then you can, we'll all do a jig.
I will also rest more easily.
So anyway, but I just wanted to wish you guys a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And thanks, and thanks to Katie for all. I mean, it's been a wonderful Christmas holiday downtown.
I, I just wanted to say thank you for the creek cleaning.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Melissa and Chris for that, too. We found the funding.
I've noticed that they, they aren't as good as the inmates, but they did, they did a decent job.
At least we found somebody willing to do it, right?
Yeah, so thank you.
So anyway, uh, we'll be doing an RFP on that so that they can set it up for a multi-year down the road. Um, but yeah, there's not a, a really good solution on that one.
Thank you very much. So from our Administrative Services Director, Mr. Gorski, do we have any further? Nothing this evening. Well, Merry Christmas to you too, sir. Chief of Police Fender Wheel. Nothing.
I was going to say, I'm glad you're well, but I missed the beard already.
Thank you very much. And our fire chief is not with us online? Nope, in that case.
So I would just like to recognize the city staff for their work on the Christmas parade. It was a beautiful event and much loved by this community. And staff gives considerably of their time, their family's time for this event. So I just want to recognize them. We do have a very nice letter that was sent to the city council from. Um, Dawn Marovich. So I just wanted to share that with you so that you could help celebrate your staff for their work. And the sacrifice that they make with their families for this community event. So my thanks to all of them for that.
Thank you. Madam, Councilwoman Cruz. It's that time, it's just.
All right, here we go.
Zipping by, isn't it?
Uh, committee meeting update, although several committee meetings were canceled this month. There were a few that were not. I attended the Yes Partnership Lunch Drive Through Fundraiser. And then the CSEDD meeting where many things were discussed, um, way too much to go into, but. She had highlighted some of them in her presentation. And finally, the staff and I attended the Pop Hudson Sing and sang Silver Bells, where I was coached how to yell city. And the super fun uh event, um, you not only celebrating the Holy Family, but all families. And as we enter this final week of Christ's Mass, I just want to say bravo to all those who worked so hard. To make so much happen. And I think I handed out about all of these. These are a great idea. Thank you.
They are. So. Thank you very much, Councilman Merrill.
Um, I, I have to ditto, um. Councilmember Cruz's comments of like, there were quite a few canceled or uh rescheduled meetings. Um, however, I did attend the Topeka County Commission on Homelessness meeting. Um, I figured I'd just share some of the uh priority projects for the coming year that were shared by Michael Roberson, the um. Head of that committee. Uh, one, he wants to finally um, uh. Put together a community toolkit that'll um deal with outreach, local ordinances. Um, assessment tools for triage and uh update our, our software-based uh data collection systems for the homelessness management information system. Uh, number two would be to um finally get the navigation center going to act as a front door to all of our available services and um determine eligibility. For those services. Uh, number three would be transitional housing. That's going to be um. Held off on, I think, for the uh immediate future due to find, uh, due to funding ambiguity. Uh, number four would be landlord education, um, and engagement and uh identifying federal subsidies. For uh low-income families to qualify for housing they otherwise wouldn't be able to afford. Uh, number five would be distributed housing. Um. We, uh, according to the county, like they have millions available to buy housing. I don't know if that's believable or not, given the state of. Things at the county right now. I don't know what their budget's looking like. Uh, number six, uh. We're very committed to building out permanent housing solutions for the long-term future. And uh number seven would be um further uh development of a potential safe parking program. Uh, Michael's been reaching out to some churches, um. And county properties and stuff like that. It'd be a permit-based program. Um, and that's about it for Chico. And we had the uh ATCA Board Meeting uh on December ninth. Uh, there's not a, a whole lot of huge stuff um to report. Uh, there is going to be a new uh twelve-unit um housing project that's, I think, just been completed in Jackson. As part of um ATCA's stable of housing opportunities for uh people in need. Uh, Joe put in a lot of work, um, reducing overall budgetary increases, which was great. Um, and I think, let me see here. Uh. Yeah, everything's according to plan. We've uh been able to increase the budget for our uh early childhood education programs and stuff like that, but um. I think that's all I have to report at this time.
I have a question. So where are things with the navigation center?
With what?
With the navigation center component of that.
I think it's still very much in the planning stages. As far as I know, there hasn't even been a location permanently approved for building it. So. Still kind of a pie in the sky idea at this point, from what I can tell.
Okay, because that seems to be a very, very important component to.
I agree.
Dealing with a lot of issues that will kind of bring everything into line.
Yeah, I actually brought up um at that meeting, uh. Uh, kind of pushed back uh to some county officials on underutilized property that the county already has that could be converted into. Something that I think would probably save the taxpayers a lot more money than building something from the ground up. But um, you know, we're. Trying to think of everything and, you know, I'm sure we'll arrive at a solution sooner as opposed to later, at least I hope, so.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, Councilman Hawkins.
Uh, yeah, just wanted. Just wanted to apologize for not being there. Had a few things going on here at home, so I had to take care of that, but um. Just want to uh thank everyone uh for the great year we've had on the city council. Um. And uh, you know, just uh remind everyone that's listening to check in on your neighbors. Um, it's cold out there. Um. And um, just want to thank everyone that um I'm on the city council and the uh, the voters of the city of Sonora and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. I hope we will see you before next year.
Yes, yes, you will.
Good, good. Mayor Pro Tim, Sagerstrom.
Um, well, I, along with Councilmember Cruz and Mayor um Plummer, I attended the TCTC evacuation overview. And um. I was kind of disappointed that, that there has been so little, um, well, I guess there's a plan in, in. Uh, in progress uh to improve evacuations uh from the county, but as our mayor pointed out. Um, the Greenley extension would be a um, a huge um advancement in getting people from. One oh eight over to forty-nine and trying to, and to uh avoid roadblocks uh within the city itself. And as Councilmember Cruz pointed out, that uh as people are fleeing the county, the roundabout at um. Uh, Chicken Ranch uh would be um, uh. A huge roadblock. So um those kinds of things need to be taken into consideration and um the team promised to do that. Um, I did sit in on the Economic Development uh um district meeting and as uh Councilmember Cruz pointed out. A lot of things are happening and being planned and um. Kathy Galino in Calaveras County uh has gotten funds for broadband pl, uh planning, as has the county. So hopefully. We will have less interruptions in our communications in the future. I went to the Chamber Mixer and that was a lot of fun. I didn't win anything, but. It was a lot of fun. And um, and the winning windows really are totally amazing. And then I just wanted to thank Tracy Russell for the letter she wrote to the Union Democrat, um praising um. Our city response to the recreational vehicle rollover on uh Lions and Hope. And I wish I'd written it, um, that she really um was very eloquent in her thanks for the quick response. And the amazing follow-up and cleanup. So uh, I also want to thank um. The city for, um, I think we've had two trees from our property come down on Church Lane. And each time they've been able to clear the, the roadway uh in um expeditious um manner and much appreciated. And um I wanted to say thanks too and Merry Christmas to all, or Happy Holiday, uh whatever you're celebrating.
If it makes you feel any better, I didn't win anything either at the raffle. So. Well, thank you very much. One of the things I attended, I had been invited to by Darren Dues. And it was a workshop put on by Mercedes Toon and some of the people she works with. And they brought in Braver Angels, which I think is a regional or maybe even a national organization. And. They deal a lot with conflict resolution and training people how to. How to de-escalate and or deal with. People in oppositional situations. So the essential theme was that how does one enjoy Christmas dinner with people? With whom one can't talk very well about politics and what type of people can come up. In those situations. And. I'm probably explaining it in the worst way. But it was very well put on. It was worthwhile. And I'm very glad to have attended and happy to give them. It was worthwhile and I'm very glad to have attended and happy to give them a, a kudos for work well done. And organizationally, it was excellent. The presentation was well done. And for people like us on the council where we are in often conversations with people who disagree with us very firmly. It, snicker, snicker, Mr. Merrill. So, uh, it, it, they provided good tools for one, recognizing different types of situations and different ways of responding to them. And I just wanted to, to recognize work well done. So, thank you, Braver Angels. With that, the city is on a very bright path going forward. We are planning and going to be doing lots of things with the city council. That will be very exciting when we start our future planning and our workshops for that. I am looking very much forward to working with all of you and feel blessed to have such an able and, uh, council that is able and works together and pulls together and has the city's best interest at heart. So thank you very much to all of you. And I'm even optimistic that, while it sounds overstated, that we can help pull the county along with us to a brighter future and want to work with them. I appreciate the supervisors that we have in place and the work that, the efforts they have made to reach out and work with us. And I think that we have a very bright future going forward and I'm looking forward to that. Next year is going to be wonderful for us. And in the meantime, Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. Thank you very much. Turn the meeting.